So, uh, welcome everyone to the, uh, March eleventh, um, twenty twenty four subcommittee. Subcommittee meeting of the Wakefield Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm gonna call up. So with us tonight from the board is myself, Tom Lucy and Chip Tarbell. So Chip, you're present and accounted for. And we're here. To discuss the comprehensive permit application, uh, from the, the residents at Nahant. And, uh, so Mr. Panos, if you can introduce yourself and, uh, the architect for the record, please.
Yes, for the record, my name is Jason Panos, an attorney practicing law at two four six Yandere Street. Pivety, Massachusetts. I'm joined by Stefano Bosso of SB Design. Uh, from Beverly, Massachusetts. Uh, I, I don't remember your exact address on Dodge Street, but.
One twenty-six Dodge Beverly.
There you go. So my recommendation following our discussion of about three weeks ago with the subcommittee. Is to take up where we left off. We recommended, you'll recall, Mr. Chair and, and, uh, member Tarbell. That we proposed centering the building and pulling it back from Nahant Street. Um, and. You were quite concerned about massing effect and how it would look and that the building looks. Out of place in the character neighborhood. So Stefano came up with some concepts. With annotations to. Uh, to, to follow your, your discussion points and come up with something that with sloped roofs and. Uh, more clapboard and something that does have that neighborhood feel that also would propose to. Reduce the height at the front of the building, basically flip, if you recall, the. Um, the, the step back from the back of the building to the front of the building. So we've got a lower. Uh, area in the front and the back of the building has, uh, the higher, higher, uh, levels. And I wasn't, pardon me, very articulate with that because I didn't do the design. So through the chair, if I may, uh, introduce Stefano to. Put up, uh, or share screen the.
As we go do that, I am supposed to remind people that, uh, the meeting is being recorded. It will be available online. Uh, later this week on the town's website. So, uh, so everyone who in attendance is aware that it is being recorded. So sorry to interrupt you, Stefano, but, uh, I, I, I believe Mr. Panos was kicking it over to you. Yeah. If you could walk us through what you had sent us.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. This could be.
Before you go into that, can you show the, just to refresh, show the, uh, plan that shows the building more centered? It, it to the property?
Sure. Do you want the one from Tony or the one that we've been working on since then?
Uh, why don't you do the one you've been working on?
Okay. Um, so this didn't go over with the materials from Friday, but. As we've been putting together the elevations of the building, we're also looking at how the units align to try to make the bump, bump in, bump outs. All that sort of stuff makes sense. Um, so we have a first draft of an updated typical unit plan. Um, based on the revised site plan that, uh, Tony from Hayes put together. We also are starting to look a little bit more at, you know, what's going on in this building footprint that they diagrammatically showed in the civil plan. Um, so this, this hasn't been reviewed by a civil engineer, um, but just. To help us in putting together the building and understand where, where things can go. What, you know, what's the entrance to the building gonna look like? Um, we put this together. It's helpful for us. So it's the same general idea that we looked at last time. Uh, driveway that wraps around the entire building. Um. Two curb cuts at either side, the east and the west on Haunt Street. Um, the wing, uh, running along the Haunt Street here. This is a four-story. Portion of buildings. So that's three levels of housing above the parking garage. Um, the leg running down away from Nahant Street is a five-story building. Um. Four stories of housing above parking garage. And then the, uh, the yellow areas that we're starting to show in plan are where we might have a, a one-story bump out. For the entrance lobby, uh, fitness space, um, something like that. Um, so that would sit, sit lower with the main massing of the building being above was shown as parking here.
Now. One of my questions is that we were shown a diagram on February eighth. It wasn't really a site plan. It was a drawing. So if, if we're moving in this direction, these things have to be memorialized. More formally. You know, with someone's stamp, you know, professional stamp on there. Um. It's cause I don't. You know, it, it, we're, we're in an awkward spot here. We're, we're, we've talked about concepts and we've seen drawings, but. Uh, you know, there's no. There's no official record of them other than our conversation. So, um. Anyway, so.
We, we did submit these, well, we, we haven't submitted this particular, uh. Plan. Stefano, if you could go back very quickly, uh, it'll be no problem to give this to you as a concept plan. Um, but after tonight, we would like to go forward and do exactly what you indicated and, and. Uh, formalize the plan, but if you could go back to the Hayes plan, I believe we did send that to you. Uh, at that last mid-February meeting. This, right?
Uh, no, I, hmm, I'd have to look. I don't wanna say yes or no.
Okay.
I, 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 my recollection, it was a little less formal than this. And because it was fresh and because, uh, Tony had just made the drawing. Uh, I'll certainly look at our records, um. Uh, for sure. But if you could be prepared to bring this, uh, on Wednesday night as well.
Sure. And, and.
So for goal tonight, what I'd like to do is walk through what you've submitted. Yep. So this, if, if you've updated this or so in some ways, it doesn't matter what we saw again so much. This is what you have. I wanna walk through what you have. Uh, the, the two drawings that you submitted on Friday and then give the full update on where we are.
And, and everything we presented, uh, Mr. Chair, we will give you, uh, we have no problem with that. It, it, I, I believe we gave this to you already. Even if we have, we'll give it to you again, along with what Stefano just presented, just so you have a complete record. Of even versions and drafts. That's, that's no problem. So Stefano, I apologize, but please, please, uh, present your. Uh, diagram, your.
No problem. Um, so we, we took the, the information, the feedback that was discussed, uh, last month. Um, just to summarize typically, the, the flat-roofed, um, massing of the building. Uh, we felt it would be more appropriate to have, uh, sloped roof on the building, um, given the neighborhood context. Also, um, having brick up the sides of the building. Uh, was something we didn't wanna see, um, introducing more clapboard and more typical details that you see in the other houses in the neighborhood. So we took that and we went to the drawing boards and, um. This typically, we get more iterations before we show this to you. So the colors, you know, the colors need some, some help, you know, we're still. Working on the massing, um, things can slide around. But in general, the concept is, you know, we'd have a, a heavier base on the building at the parking garage. I started with brick. I think, uh, like more of a field stone look would be better than the brick personally. Um, but up above the three levels of housing would be, uh, mix of clapboard. Shingle, maybe some smooth panel with, uh, you know, one by four baton trim, um, type of aesthetic. We'd bump out some bay windows, um, strategically, um, in this driveway side. Facing east on Nahant Street. Um, you know, we've put a, a bay window at one corner. We've put a balcony that would project out, you know, four or five feet on the other corner. Uh, we might slide that around, you know, that might, might find that as we look at it and. Plan a little bit more developed. It makes sense to push the balcony in a bay and let, you know. One bay window on this side, have a little bit more breathing room from the balconies, um. We're showing a two-foot step back in the middle here. So we get a little bit of that depth of the building at the same time. Opportunity to change up the siding type or the color or the color. Um, so for instance. You know, we, if we have a clapboard on the main body of the building, we might change the color to a darker version. Accent color, um, and switch to a shingle siding or something that helps to break it up so that it feels a little bit more, um, buried. We're running a standing seam metal roof around the whole fourth floor line of the building. So picture about a, a foot and a half, um, wash with the metal standing seam. Um, and then a hip roof, uh, wrapping around the top of the fourth floor. Um. Looking at the other side, these colors are showing up very vibrant on the screen. Um, I know not everybody cares about the colors, but just, you know. Uh, we're showing, you know, maybe we add some of that standing seam metal roof, um, on the bay window as an extra accent that helps to break it up. Um. Moving down the length of the building, we're showing some steps, step backs. So these would be, you know, about a four-foot step back as you go down the building. You might go thirty-five or forty feet. You step back a few, you know, four feet. We introduce a different, uh, siding type or color. We might have a, another feature like a little one-foot box bay. Um, with some Juliet balconies, step back another four feet. Can change up the siding type again, add a bank of balconies here to create a little bit of depth. Um, you know, and looking at the top of the building, I think one of the things that's jumping out to me is that the, uh. The elevations are starting to get a little bit of depth with the step in, step out siding changes. But the roof line, if that's too consistent, I think you, you know, you don't really get the bang for your buck in terms of some of the. The push and pull with the building. So we started to show here over on the right side is. Maybe we take away some of that hip roof. Maybe some of that just gets a cornice line, kind of pulls down, um, the height of the roof. We wouldn't have a ridge there. It'd be a flat roof in that section. You would just have the hip in another section. So, you know, we might look at that and that's a little easier to read in three D. Um, so we might strategically look at, is there a section of the building where we wanna stop the roof? And then start the sloped roof again, um, so that it gives a little bit more of the illusion of. Different masses of building, um, that are connected. Um. So, you know, I love to hear questions and comments. I think if, if in general, this is a positive. Direction, you think we're going in the right direction. Um, you know, we think the, the right step would be to continue modeling this in the computer. And from there we can get, um, you know, three D views, renderings and a, a variety of views from different angles. Um, that are easier to read and easier to test different options on the computer. It's quicker to. Say, hey, I wanna see what the field stone looks like. Hey, let's look at a little bit. More color or how does it look if it's more muted and neutral? Um, so those are things we could test, you know, come back. With three schemes, um, that you wanna see. Um, so yeah, hap- happy to.
So, so first quick question, the, the, the original, uh, picture was the front section of the building. Does this rendering or this sketch, uh, I guess it's more of a sketch, is, uh, depict the entirety of the length of the back of the building?
So this is along the Haunt Street. Um, and this would be, um, what we're showing here. If you can see.
Help me orient me a little bit. Because the front appeared to be, you showed a person and, uh, looked like a telephone pole. On the first sketch.
Yep.
So that, that's Nahant Street on the right. And this is that front section of the building.
Yep. So we're looking at the driveway side here.
Runs be behind this towards the back of the site. Is that correct?
Uh, this is on the Haunt Street.
Really?
Does it, this is the front of the Haunt Street? Yes, this is what's facing the road.
So I'm standing in the middle of the heart, looking at this, is what you're telling me.
Yep. Yeah. So this is a portion of the building. This is, uh, you know, looking at about.
So you're not even see, we're not even seeing the full length of the building?
You're seeing these three sections. We got step back, step back.
Okay. So for Wednesday night, can you just be clear that that's what it is that you're showing up front? Cause I, it, I think it's gonna, the board has not seen this in a while and it hasn't obviously seen these. And it's been a while since we given them an update. So I, I do think it's time to go back to the board for a full update. To share what has been shared with us, to share, I, I spent a little bit of time on the twenty-seventh sharing. What we talked about on the eighth. So they have at least a verbal update from that. Um. And because I was under the impression, and maybe it's just, there was no real labeling on these sketches. So it was really hard to know what I was looking at. And since you showed the two, I thought I was in the first one, seeing the front portion of the building. And then the, the back portion of the building. So I. I think we wanna be clear, um. When we start the presentation with the board on Wednesday night.
All right.
Chip, you have any other questions or?
Yeah, no, I think it's just important to make sure that we're very specific, like this is a. Like show this and then the next picture so that they know what they're looking at.
Correct.
That's helpful.
And, and.
I'm just gonna stay here. Sorry, Mr. Panos. I hear some other folks on here. I, I get there's some interest. I'm gonna let public comment come at the end, but if, so if you could mute yourself, this is a really kind of a working. Uh, meeting for the applicant and a couple of the members of the board here. To prepare for Wednesday night to share with the other board members, to make sure that we're, we're in a common ground of what's gonna be shown. And where we are with our, the dialogue that's happened. So I, I'm gonna ask for your patience with that and, and allow. Uh, the two parties, the board and, and the applicant and their attorney to talk here. So thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Panos, were you gonna say something?
That's okay. Yeah, uh, just, just more administrative, um, are you okay with getting it, taking a. Late received communication because Stefano can update the plans and rotate them even more?
Yeah, I will. Chip and I will say, yeah, we'll, we'll say that's what happened that we met on Monday. That we, we wanted to share an update and it wasn't in on Friday because we were having the subcommittee meeting on Monday. So. Uh, but I do think the board's ready for an update. So, uh, a formal update. So I, I, I think, um, there'll be understanding of that.
Uh, so Stefano, uh, how long will it take you to give that level of clarity with annotations on the plan? So that if you pick it up and you see what you're looking at, you can almost in a self-explanatory way know what you're looking at.
I can put that together after the call and send it tonight.
Perfect. So are you okay with sometime tomorrow before noon, uh, Mr. Chair getting these materials?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
So that's the Nahant Street that you're showing. And then which side, Stefano, are you showing with the garage door opening? Left or right?
That's on the right side of the plan here.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
It's worth the time to make those notes though, to make it clear what people are looking at.
I agree.
Definitely.
Okay. And would the intention be, and if, and you can speak to this. Would the intention be that this type of treatment would be carried throughout the building for the back portion of the building?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, the feedback that we're looking for from you is, is this the right direction? If it is, then we. Carry that logic back around the building and then the other feedback we'd be looking for, you know, how much kind of variation do you want? Um, you know, we have longer runs going away from the street, so we can add more, you know, push, pull, uh. Change up the roof line, balconies base, that sort of thing. Um. You know, we can kinda do more or less of it. Um, I think there's a range that would make sense, but. You know, if you wanna see more. Um.
I think that's for you to determine based on our comment that we want, you know, that, uh, help the massing. So. If you think it's more, then it needs to be more. If you think it needs to be less, then you should present less.
Okay.
I mean, I don't wanna, I'm not a designer or an architect. I can look and react, but I can't, you know. I'm not, not a designer by any means.
That, that's perfect. It gives you the latitude, Stefano, to do what?
You as an architect think is appropriate.
Right. Right. I'm gonna try to direct the board's comments on Wednesday to what you just talked about. So.
Awesome.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with this going to the board, Chip. I don't know about you, you know, um.
Yeah, I think it's important. I mean, they'll give us, you know, the board's not shy. They'll, they'll help direct the, the narrative as to what direction to go or. Or where. I think we're in better shape than we were, so I think it's time to give them an update.
Right. I think in terms of materials.
We. I won't worry too much about that. Yeah.
Yeah. No, but I mean, in terms of the use of brick way up the building and so forth, that, 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 that's been addressed. So, um, right, I'll, um, you know, I wanna be productive with our time tonight, so I don't wanna. Uh, I just wanna kinda make sure you, you're, you're prepped for the board on Wednesday, so you can hear the feedback that, that, that's required. Um. Cause I don't have any further comments, so I think this is right to show the board to.
And so, Mr. Chair and Mr. Tarbell. What we can do is a little narrative, you know, prepare a little narrative that talks about. Why we centered the building in the, in the, you know, it pulled it back from the Haunt Street. And what, what motivated that, which is really a lot of the fire department comments and, and. Safety concerns of access throughout all sides of the building, among other things. Um, the massing, all of the things that motivated where we are today. And then, and then Stefano can walk through. The different design elements that he presented with the clarity that you're looking for as to what you're looking for. Uh, where you're looking, eh, given any vantage point. Is that fair? So a narrative and basically three plans.
Yeah.
Good.
Sounds about right to me.
And you've heard the board, we won't be shy. You know, if we've got opinions, you'll hear them. So, um. Uh, so I'm not worried about you getting feedback. So, uh, I'll remind the board too that, um. Well, we have a, a major disagreement on density, that we're, we're gonna wait for this traffic study. We're gonna wait. It's your, uh, contention that we need to, to wait and move our way through that process. So we'll, um. We will do that and, uh, and not waste each other's time arguing in circles about.
No, that's perfect. It's unproductive, uh, obviously to do that. Uh, did, did. Lieutenant Anderson give you any sense on when the, uh, TAC would be meeting and have they given? The traffic report to VHB yet? Do you know?
I don't know. He, he did promise me it would happen this month. So he knows that we're concerned about the timeline here and, uh. And that we want to do it as soon as possible and that, uh, it's been a major, uh, concern for all the. Both the correspondence and the testimony we've heard from neighbors. So they get all of that. So they understand the, the, the interest in it. And we wanna give it the appropriate amount of time. We wanted to get the TXE and do a meeting. If we gotta do two meetings on it, we'll do two meetings on it.
Sure.
So.
It's a critical thing and, you know, what I, what I might encourage. Uh, as the conversation unfolds is how, how we could potentially use this development as a method to help. The town mitigate the traffic concerns along the Haunt Street. Uh, again, creating a win-win scenario, not a zero sum. You, you lose this and we gain that. I, this isn't the approach that I'm encouraging and I know it's not the approach you're encouraging. Uh, I, I really believe this is, there's a good opportunity here for us to come together and address some of these longstanding concerns.
Yeah. Well, we hope all that works out. So, um, Chip, I don't know if you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm good for now, Tom. Thank you.
Okay. And you have some direction for Wednesday night? You feel like you have what you need, Mr. Panos?
Yeah, uh, as I said, I think we're gonna, just to recap, give you a narrative. Uh, Stefano's gonna tweak his plans a little more to give you that, uh, that more, that context really. Context, the annotation, so that when you pick it up, you know what you're looking at and from where. And, uh, I, I think it's still going to be a fairly simple, uh, package of materials. It's. Literally going to be the narrative plus three plans.
And Stefano, if you send that to Gail, Gail will send it out. I will send an email on the top of that. Indicating that Chip and I met with you tonight, that this is why you're receiving it, the materials, when you're receiving them as opposed to Friday. So I'll take that issue off the board for you guys. Um. So, uh, members will be prepared, uh, for that and not feel aggravated that they didn't get it on Friday.
Right. And if there's one recommendation I can make, um, for you to consider about the timing and how the. How the process of the hearings, um. Kind of proceed. Two-week intervals is a really short compressed time to, to prepare for the next hearing. Um, I, I'm personally, eh, eh, take this for what it is. Uh, I'm personally used to monthly meetings. Uh, because it does give enough of the runway space to kind of take comments from previous meetings and incorporate them into subsequent plans. So what I might recommend for consideration, and I'm not a hundred percent on this yet myself, but. Um, what I might recommend is that we meet with the subcommittee monthly and that we meet with the ZBA monthly. On alternating two-week intervals so that we keep it going with you guys at the subcommittee level. And then are prepared to have enough lead time to adequately prepare and substantively present. Before the ZBA, because let's face it, I mean, TAC, we're probably not gonna hear from them for at least another month. Um, and there are probably some things that you're going to wanna digest and look at as these plans take shape and. Uh, we start adding a lot more detail because that's gonna come fast and furious. You know, once it happens, but we're gonna need time.
Right. What, what we traditionally do is not look at architecture every week. So traditionally, we would have looked at civil. When we look at civil, we'll look at land, you know, another meeting will have landscaping. So. We tend not to look at architectural every time so that you do have that time to react to the meetings. But I do think every two weeks keeps everything moving. Uh, you'll have to let us know when you're really ready for a civil discussion.
Sure.
So my only reaction to that too, Mr. Panos is that, you know, generally we would have taken traffic up front. But minus the traffic report, and again, let's just not get in an argument about how we feel about where, why and what happened.
Yeah.
Without that, that's all we had, right? You know, so that's why we dove in. So, we are where we are. Um, I hear what you're saying, you know. That, eh but to Chip's point, there are other aspects that we can dive into. That if we send you back on something to to examine or to study, that you don't have to come back two weeks later. You can come back and talk about something else, so let's, I'll keep in mind what you said and uh, trust me, we're. We are, we're all volunteers and we're doing the best we can here.
I know.
Um, so we don't want to waste everybody's time. If there's nothing to talk about, then you and I can get together and decide how we're gonna move forward and uh. Eh eh with that, so, but point taken, so.
I was the chair of the ZBA in ZBID for ten years, so I I know what you're going through, believe me.
So with that, I know you have another appointment, you were very clear about that, so, um. There are a couple of members in the public on here. Yeah, I I think we have our game plan for Wednesday, that was my goal here. And I think we're clear on that, but other folks have uh joined. If someone's got a comment, um. I'm gonna open it up to public, but please remember, this was just a working meeting to organize ourselves for the public hearing on Wednesday. I'd ask you to uh keep your comments. Uh, to that, knowing that we we've got a lot, a- as you've heard from the conversation here, we've got a lot to talk about with traffic, we've got a lot to talk about. Going forward with civil engineering, uh, we're gonna get feedback from the board and the public Wednesday on architecture. You know, um, public safety and massing will come up as part of the traffic, so, you know, we're not really here to cover those tonight, um. But if you'd like to uh say something for the public record, uh, please, you know, raise your hand or make yourself available on the Zoom. Karen, I see your hand up, please unmute yourself and uh give your name and address, please.
Hi, Karen McMaster, twenty-five Nahant Street. I'm I'm gonna save all my comments for the Wednesday meeting, I just wanted you to know that we were watching. And um, I did try to get in touch with those other women that were on because they don't know how to Zoom. So I did tell them to try to unmute and I'm gonna try to work with them, um, muting gets, I mean, this gets a little bit tough for them. I'm in work. Because I don't have access to do things, so we'll wait till Wednesday, um, we want to hear things. Um, so I know the traffic study is a big thing. Um. So the, I'm just gonna leave it at one thing, I just don't, I want to make sure that the traffic study, whenever it's done or whatever else isn't done when the school is not in session. That's a big thing for me, cause it's not accurate.
So Karen, what will happen is that, um. The applicants completed the traffic study, they submitted it. So what will happen is what's called the Traffic Advisory Committee is comprised of uh Lieutenant Anderson from the Wakefield Police Department. Uh, Chief Sullivan from the Wakefield Fire Department. And we have a peer reviewer from uh Vanessa, which is a traffic, um. Engineer as well, so they'll review it, so we'll have some expertise, look at it. One of the questions we can certainly ask when we go over it is, when did you do the counts? When did you look at this? That that. Is a a normal question that comes up on these types of things, because people don't, especially during COVID, people didn't want. Like traffic counts from COVID when no one was going to work, so we hear you, uh. You know, it's certainly something we're interested too, because we know peak hour is different because we got the schools at each end of the street, right? We got the Galvin at one end and the high school at the other. Uh, so there's a lot of different questions and and concerns that folks I know are gonna have about this, so.
Alright, thank you.
And we did find out, you know, that this, you know, we. People, there haven't been as many people showing up at Zoom, but when we had what was gonna be a similar working group meeting, like forty people showed up. Uh, when we were just, I didn't want to discourage people from coming, but it was. The better venue was the full hearings, because these meetings are just what you heard tonight, trying to get things in the good order. So we have a a shared plan to of what the dialogue is gonna consist of for the the full public meetings.
Yeah, no, I understand, I I.
I appreciate your comment though, and I understand your concerns, so.
Yep, alright, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hi Paula Gardella, I believe it was.
Hi, I'm one of the people that don't know what I'm doing. But I'm here. Um, I would just request while we're just talking about massing is and the building. If we could somehow get an idea or the public could get an idea. Of exactly how this is actually looking within the neighborhood. We're seeing it in isolation, we might see a couple of houses uh spread around. But when I see the pictures, I really feel that the pictures are fake. Uh, there is no lawn, there is no trees, y- this structure will literally be abutting every property in this area. You don't see that in the plan. You see one house on Wilson Road, you see one house on Nahant. You don't see this thing in three D. And if people could see it in three D, they would see how gigantic. It is, regardless of where you put the front, the back, the center, the middle, it's gigantic. That's my only point that I want to be made. Show it for what it is, please stop trying to hide. And worry about colors. We don't care about colors. I don't care about color. I care about size, and that's all I'll say tonight.
No, Paula, thank you for attending, thank you for your comment. Uh, we're trying to get some direction on where to go, but certainly one of the things that the board looks at with. Pretty much every project of any type of size such as this. We always request to see it in context, that's what you're asking to. Let's see it in context of the neighborhood, and that's certainly. Gonna be a request that we're going to make going forward. I think the architect at this point is just looking for. Uh, some s- feedback on his strategies to break down the building both vertically and horizontally, break down the massing. And that's kind of where w- what we were talking about a little bit tonight, so. We're hearing that, but I hear you and it's something, you know, I personally, Chip will tell you, I ask for it every time.
Thank you. Okay, appreciate you, you guys are wonderful and I appreciate you both, all your board members, great, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I think we're kind of done here uh for the evening. I think uh we have a plan for Wednesday night's public hearing. We'll we'll wait, um. And and take your presentation as discussed, Mr. Panos.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Basil, if you can obviously be ready to share all your materials. Um, that will be helpful. And other than that, I think, Chip, I'm I'm good for tonight, you know, we'll we'll save our, you're you're muted, Chip.
That's how most people, that's how most people want me. No, just, you're 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 continued, so. You know, continued hearings come up for for people in the public, they don't have to wait all night, so. I don't know what we've got before this, but it should be pretty early.
No, I think you've, I think, uh, I think we've. I can't remember if they're before or after Melvin, but I think at most we have one before them, so this will be fairly. You know, you guys can plan your evenings out a little bit easier that uh you'll be early on the agenda now. So, uh, with that. I'm gonna close the hearing, Mr. Panos, unless you have something else you wanted to add.
Uh, you may just want to get a an address for Ms. Gardella.
Did she leave?
I don't know.
I'll find it. I believe she's written before, so I I think I have her address. There's a couple other, uh. There's a couple other correspondents have come in, Mr. Panos, so send those to you and make sure that they're available to you.
Yep.
Uh, in the meantime as well, um.
Alright.
Perfect, thanks, guys.
With with that, I'm gonna close the hearing, we don't need a voice vote or anything, uh, cause it's just a working group meeting. So with that, that's the uh conclusion of our meeting tonight, and we'll see everybody on Wednesday evening at seven.